All right, good evening. This meeting of June 9th, 2014, of the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education is called to order. Our mission is to develop a world-class learners and citizens of character in a safe and inclusive learning community. Roll call, please.
Mr. Barton?
Here.
Mr. Batine?
Present.
Mr. Donahue?
Mr. Prohaska?
Here.
Ms. Ryan?
Here.
Ms. Seagert?
Here.
Mr. Strilo?
Present.
We have no students today, so we get to lead our own pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I move that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I move to approve the minutes of the previous board meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the previous board meeting. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes stand approved. We are on to red carpet recognition. Mr. Ryan.
Okay, as our tradition, this meeting in June, we bid farewell or happy retirement to administrative folks who are moving on to the next phase in their life. And so we'll start tonight with Tom Meisner. Many of you know Tom is the Assistant Principal Activities Director at Hempstead High School. He sends an email, I believe maybe to the board, he will not be able to be here tonight. The Hempstead Girls Soccer Team will be playing in the second round of the regional soccer tournament, and to win tonight, I think we will send them to state. So, he was busy, he sends his regrets, he appreciates the thoughts, and again, he's hard at work tonight. I will share the plaque that we will forward to Tom. Basically says, "Award of Merit Presented to Tom Meisner in recognition of loyal and dedicated service to Dubuque Community School District for 10 years of leadership as Assistant Principal in service of our youth, 2004 to 2014, presented by the Board of Education and Administration of Dubuque Community School District." So, we will get this to Tom's hands in the next week or so. So, congratulations, Tom Meisner. And then I'm going to invite Kevin Kelleher, since the retiree is from his department, to begin the next phase here.
Good evening, Board members. Just wanted to say a couple words about Joanne Lukin, who is here tonight, retiring after 47 years with the district. She made coming to work enjoyable for all of us in the department. We knew sometime during the day that we would have a really good laugh, maybe in the beginning of the day, maybe at the end of the day, but we knew some point in the day, we were all going to enjoy a good laugh. It made the work atmosphere and culture just enjoyable. She was the state expert on Ipers. She had other school districts contact her when they had questions on Ipers, and she would happily get back to them. Her attitude, her model for life was her attitude is your altitude is your attitude, and she lived that every day. She was kind to others, very supportive. Her office was kind of known as the district confessional. Staff and employees would come in and close the door, and they'd have a discussion, and afterwards, she'd offer a kind word or some sincere advice and make everyone feel better. So, we're very proud of her, and we're hoping she's enjoying retirement as much as she enjoyed coming to work.
And I am going to, because I can't not, I'm going to say a few words about Joanne too, because these guys, I can't help myself sometimes, but you know, 47 years, and we tried to look up the district records, and it just isn't possible for us to go back to the beginning of the district 167 years ago, but we believe that Joanne is probably the longest-serving ever school employee. 47 years is an amazing period of time, and it's really, I think, a testament to Joanne that to be the manager of payroll and benefits, but also to be kind of the heart of the district. I mean, she worked with every retiree during those years to make sure that they maximize everything that they had worked so hard to attain through Ipers and those areas. So, I mean, it's just a phenomenal career and something that you will know literally thousands of people in this community who will tell you a great story about Joanne and how she helped them. So, we will miss Joanne, we already miss Joanne, she's been gone for several months, and we're happy she's here tonight. So, never want to pass up an opportunity to say something nice about Joanne, because she's always very supportive of all of us at the district. So, Jim.
I'd just like to, on behalf of the retired teachers, all the retired teachers in the school district, I'd like to thank Joanne for all the sound advice she gave to all of us, myself included, and your work is very much appreciated, and very well respected, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Joanne loves an opportunity to give a speech. But we will make that offer to her if she wants to say a few words. But you don't need to. That's fine.
I would like to take a moment to let you know how much I've appreciated working with all of you and how much I enjoyed my job with Dubuque Community School District. I have been influenced and inspired by many colleagues and made many great friends over the 100 years I was here. I want to give a special thank you to a great staff. Surrounding yourself with good people is a key to success. There were challenging times, good times, sad times, and fun times. I always appreciated the support given to me during all these times. I want to thank the DEA for their kindness allowing me to receive the Team Award and the Friend of Education Award. This was a very humbling experience and a great honor which will never be forgotten. I have worked for nine superintendents.
Don't.
Worked with five HR directors, yes, Mr. Cole Pitts, and three direct supervisors in 46 and a half years, to you, Kevin. It was a great journey. Thank you for allowing me to complete it with you. Thank you for all your support and friendship.
Thank you.
Joanne's plaque reads, "Presented to Joanne Lukin, in recognition of loyal and dedicated service to the Dubuque Community School District for 47 years of leadership as the payroll and benefits manager in service to our youth."
Thank you very much.
And one thing I forgot to mention, Joanne never missed a payroll deadline in 47 years.
Wow.
Amazing fact.
Yeah, that's her favorite thing.
Which was your favorite superintendent?
Stan.
Who was your favorite human resource?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joanne.
Actually, the neighbors, I understand, the neighbors are all complaining in the area. They've seen an infestation of disgruntled, angry mice, because the food supply here has dried up. The word on the street is, there's no more food source at the farm for the mice. Joanne didn't notice those M&amp;M's getting moved out of there one at a time by the assembly line that the mice had created when they'd come in here at night.
Thanks. Thank you. Okay, Board salutes. Mr. Prohaska?
Yes, I'd like to recognize a couple students and a couple teachers who participated in the Iowa Association of Land Surveyors, a TrigStar state contest. The teachers from Hempstead, Rita Crody, and Amanda Goransson from Senior High School, and the students. And we had, here in the Dubuque Community School District, had two out of the top five students in the state that participated in this trig, it's an use of trigonometry and land surveying. Second place winner was a student from Hempstead High School, Mr. Jeffrey Tang, and fifth place winner was a student from Senior High School, Josh Moss. So, congratulations to our students, and it's nice to see that our students do well outside in state contests, academic-type contests, et cetera.
Good, thank you. Mr. Barton?
Yeah, Jeff Dyer at Sageville once again knocked it out of the park with his movie that he does with the kids up there, and I mean, they packed mind-frame theaters for the showing of the movie Art Show, which was an hour and 20-minute-long feature-length film that Jeff did with the kids and the staff at Sageville. It's absolutely incredible production, so credit where credit is due.
Good, thank you. All right.
I move the Board of Education to suspend the rules of order and go into open forum.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are in open forum. Anybody wanting to come and talk to us? I don't see anyone.
I move the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to reinstate the orders, rules of order and return to regular session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
I move the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the items listed in the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Just moving along.
Okay.
All right, we are now on to facilities.
Wow, that was quick.
That is fast.
Yeah, just a couple, we have some motions here, and then I'm going to have a guest motion presenter from Mr. Prohaska, who's going to cover the last one. Just a real quick heads-up to the Board members that when you do the monthly audit, there is just a new process that Mr. Kelleher has interjected for the P-card system that we've adopted, where they have invoices and stuff for you to just take a look at and just for us to make sure that there's proper financial supervision of that new process, which first time through looked solid, so we're in good shape there.
I move that the Board of Education authorize payment of final June 2014 bill subject to post-audit by the Board.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education authorize payment of final June 2014 bill subject to post-audit by the Board. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the agreement with the service employees as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agreement with the service employees as presented. Is there any discussion?
I believe Rick will speak to it briefly.
The service employees represent the custodians, which are eight, 80 employees, 80 members in that union. They have settled a 3.96% total package increase, which includes all salary and benefits totaled together. Interestingly enough, there was some shift differentials. They shifted some money, because what we had is a situation where supervisors on a shift were making not that much more than the people they were supervising, so they added a little bit more money to those supervision positions. So, it's actually a 67 cent to a 93 cent an hour increase depending on what position you were in. Do you have any questions?
You can see it's in line with the five.
We might see a trend developing here with these ratifications.
Noticed.
Any other discussion? Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agreement with the service employees as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the agreement with the secretary employees as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agreement with the secretary employees as presented. Discussion?
Similar trend line here, 3.97% total package for insurance and benefits for the secretaries and administrative assistants. They're represented by the Teamsters Local 120, 63 employees, and they took a 75 cent an hour increase. Again, you'll notice that trend line that we've got going with regard to all the unions so far.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve change order number one to TRICON General Construction on the Elementary School Computer Labs project in the increased amount of $5,593.03.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve change order number one to TRICON General Construction on the Elementary School Computer Labs project in the increased amount of $5,593.03. Is there any discussion?
I believe this is the additional computer lab in Jefferson Middle School. Am I correct?
Yeah, the budget for the elementary lab allowed for us to add one lab, additional lab at Jefferson, which brings it into sort of the standard with the other two middle schools, so it keeps it within that scope of the budget, so those dollars are available. Makes sense to add that lab and put them in the same footing of all the other middle schools in the district.
Good. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education adopt the following resolution approving construction contract certificate of insurance and bonds, be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Dubuque Community School District, Dubuque, Iowa, that the construction contract and bonds executed in insurance coverage for the Jefferson Middle School Student Corridor Locker Replacement Project as described in detail in the plans and specification heretofore approved and which have been signed by the contractor, be and the same are hereby approved, and the Board President is authorized to execute said contract on behalf of the district outlined as follows. Contractor, Clower Development Corporation doing business as Clower Construction Company. Date of contract, May 13th, 2014. Bond surety, Merchants Bonding Company, $51,640. Date of bond, May 14th, 2014.
Second. Is there any discussion? All right.
There was a nice article that the paper had showing that the lockers would be replaced at Jefferson.
Yeah.
Long overdue.
And nice quotes from the students and stuff about that it was long overdue, and the principal, et cetera.
Well done. Okay, it has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education adopt the resolution approving construction contract certificate of insurance bonds to Clower Development Corp., DBA Clower Construction Company. Date of contract, May 13th, 2014. Bond surety, Merchants Bonding Company, $51,640. Date of bond, May 14th, 2014. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. We are just moving right along. Okay, that takes us now to the Ed Programs Committee. We received an update on summer school that is going to be taking place this year. Lynn, do you want to kind of explain the summer school for this year? That's kind of different than what we've done before, or expanded, I should say.
We have an opportunity through some additional financing from the State of Iowa, known as Chapter 62, becoming quite famous, and it includes a number of areas for schools to look at, but about one section of it is that by the summer of 2017, every school district in Iowa needs to provide summer school in the area of literacy for children between kindergarten and grade three. We opted to implement it quite early, and we did focus this year on just kindergarten and first grade. We will add a subsequent year each year until we hit that third grade. The reason we made that decision is, we have not had such a comprehensive summer school at the elementary level for a number of years, so we were gearing up fairly quickly. We wanted to make sure we had all the pieces in place. But secondly, there is a consequence for students who are not reading proficiently by the end of third grade, that they potentially could be held back for retention if they do not attend the summer school session, or if they don't have other exclusionary factors, such as maybe some special education issues. So, we wanted to give the children who would be impacted by this law, the summer of 2017, every opportunity, multiple opportunities to go to summer school. Hence, our decision to start with the grades that would be impacted by this legislation. So, we are up and running. We issued invitations to, and it was by invite based on students who needed assistance. We issued 437 invitations, and over 220 children, as of last week, they said yes, they were coming. So, we're extremely pleased that parents are taking advantage of the opportunity to attend summer school, and we do have two administrators sharing the responsibility, Joe Maloney and Cindy Stephens, and we have had a wonderful crew of teachers. We are staffing our school to 10 children, very low number, 10 children for every teacher plus a paraeducator in every classroom, and we've had a wonderful response from our educators, who have said that they wanted to be a part of the teaching. So, all systems go today, and we'll keep plowing forward and see what happens.
It should be a great program, and Lynn, just a couple, five weeks, four days?
Well, 60 contact, if the children come every day, 20 days, it'll be 60 contact hours, which is something we actually will hope to improve upon in the future. We'd like to see 75 to 90 contact hours, which is what research talks about as the proper dosage for students who need to improve.
Well, I think it's great you send out, you know, over 400 invitations and more than half accepted. I mean, that's a really good start to the program.
My last birthday party wasn't that?
No. One question, Lynn, are these available at all the elementary schools?
No, we again made an effort to make sure that we were focused, you know, the more you diffuse, the more your costs increase, and so then you're making choices about larger class sizes. So, we will have two centers, one at Prescott and one in Eisenhower, and we will share facilities with our special education summer programming, so that was one reason, and also those buildings are air-conditioned. As this program gets bigger, we do anticipate that we potentially will need more sites, and you know, we're happy to do so, because that makes it more of that neighborhood concept for kids to get to their buildings. But this year, we're going to focus on two sites.
But it is available for all students?
Yes.
Just at those sites?
Across the district.
So, all students are qualified.
Great, thank you. Anything else from Ed Programs Committee you want to add?
Nothing.
Nope, I think we're good. All right. We are now ready to move on to new business, and you go ahead with that?
Sure. I move the Board of Education appoint Tara Seagert as the delegate and Matt Strilo as the alternate delegate, and authorize them full authority to cast the district's weighted elector vote as District Seven Convention scheduled by Keystone AEA for June 30th, 2014.
Second.
Okay, what this is, Matt's looking at us like, what?
I am pissed.
There is a position open on the AEA Board, and so we will have a vote in that. Tara has agreed to go.
It's singly, it's just a one minute.
It's a five-minute vote, and if something were to happen that she can't make it.
Kind of like Miss America.
You're the first runner-up.
Yeah, you're the first runner-up.
Page the crown.
That was last night, did you watch?
In the event.
Anyway, you want to add to that, Mr. Ryan?
Well, just briefly, so the way the AEA, and Craig is a member of that Board, certainly has the details, but it's by district, or by geographic district, and the entire district is within the Dubuque Community School District boundaries, and so we have one vote, but we also have the only vote. And so depending on how many people apply for that, last time I believe there were two, and so they've made a short presentation, and then a vote was held, and so depending upon how many people apply to run for that position, that may come in, so it may take a little longer than a minute, but usually it really won't be more than 15 minutes, and if it's just one person, then it really will be a minute.
I might add, Stan, that given the population, some districts lowering in population, ours increasing, not exponentially, of course, but moving up, is it's actually shifting the balance, and we could see in the next two years, another district actually coming under our control. So, it's kind of heavily weighted, we're obviously the largest district within AEA One, Keystone, and it's good to have influence in that environment, so choose well.
All right, it has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education appoint Tara Seagert as the delegate and Matt Strilo as the alternate delegate, and authorizes them full authority to cast the district's weighted elector vote at Director District Seven Convention scheduled by Keystone AEA for June 30th, 2014. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
I move the Board of Education approve the non-bargaining salary and benefits packages presented.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the non-bargaining salary and benefits packages as presented. Is there any discussion?
Just for the, I guess for the media, before you vote, we met in exempt session last week and discussed the non-bargaining and administrative salaries, so it's not just administrators, it's administrators, but it's also folks who aren't represented by the union, so some administrative assistants, some interpreters, the folks who work for the re-engagement center, so there's a list of 90-some people who are in that group, and the recommendation was to be at the same, basically, it's the trend line that you heard Mr. Cole Pitts put out there, so 3.97%. And again, just like with all bargaining, that's total package, so that's Ipers, insurance, salary, total increased costs of those employees for the upcoming year.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. All right, that takes us on to Board Member or Administrative Issues.
I'm the Board's President. Just wanted to take this opportunity to congratulate our students and our teachers and administrators on a successful year coming to a close. The work continues, obviously, for the Board. We meet again this month, and we look forward to the next term as it comes forward, and thanks for the great year that we've had.
I concur with that, yes.
I have something, and I'm sorry, but I wrote something, because unfortunately, I'm going to miss the next meeting, the strategic plan meeting. It's worth noting, it'll be the first meeting I've missed, scheduled meeting I've missed in my three years on the Board. But I did want to issue or express my opinion and my thoughts on a couple of things, and especially moving into the strategic plan and the new goals and objectives. One of the things I did when I started thinking about this was I went back to when President Batine was the president three years ago. The very first thing we did when we set out to compile the strategic plan was we watched a video on the changing educational paradigm by Sir Ken Robinson. I went back and watched it again, and the video discussed how we are trying to meet the needs of the future by doing what's been done in the past. And on the way, we are alienating many kids who don't see any purpose in going to school. He spoke about how we suck the creativity and uniqueness out of children by forcing them into a standardized box to conform to the educational culture that was developed for the Industrial Revolution. Therefore, I had asked that, or I'd request that you each re-watch, or in your case, maybe take a look at it, and some of the administrations putting together the goals and objectives, you know, take another look at it and think about it as you're setting the new strategic plan objectives. And again, I'm not trying to be hypercritical. I would say that we do an awful lot of things extraordinarily well in the Dubuque Community School District. I would also say, I think we've done a very good job as a Board, but I think one of the areas where I've been a little disappointed in the last three years is where's the sort of the visionary stuff, the reforming stuff, you know, the big, the big stuff. I think we've done the other stuff really well, but I think some of the things that we set out with when we started putting together that strategic plan was we wanted to be big and bold and take risks. I'd also say our district is in a really healthy position right now, which in my mind is the perfect time to take a big look inside and ask ourselves, what are we not doing so well? Where can we get better? How can we innovate? Try something that might fail, but it might also be great. One area where I believe we need a lot of energy and ideas is in special education. For full disclosure, I'm a parent that this touches. Our recent Department of Education audit praised the district for the open-minded re-engagement program, but was critical of the district's failure in behavioral supports and lack of positive behavioral intervention strategies and training. Hopefully, we'll address that. I recently had the chance to visit with one of the counselors at Jefferson Middle School that also happens to be one of the State of Iowa's premier trainers in PBIS, and she's already on the payroll. The team at Jefferson has begun to show incredible results using PBIS, especially for their special education population. Yet the counselor mentioned how frustrated she was and how difficult it's been in getting our own district to buy into the program that aren't our own district to buy into the program that Arnie Duncan, the Secretary of Education for the United States endorses, the state of Iowa, it's the only program that the state of Iowa endorses, and the vast majority of enlightened state education associations and districts throughout the country are using. There's a better way. I also recently attended the Changing Minds Seminar at the Grand River Center that was hosted by Project Concerned. It was a good first step towards getting our community to be more supportive and understanding to those with neurological challenges. The numbers are growing in our community and in our schools. At that, at the seminar, they reported that 25% of all Dubuques suffer from a mental illness in a given year, and that 50% of our families are affected. So one and two. And the numbers are growing. The time is now to start developing a more inclusive culture and significantly better behavioral supports. In concert with our AEA, we need to demand accountability in our system and stop blaming children and families. Finally, we need to develop strategies to ban seclusion and restraint within our district. These antecedents are barbaric and do considerably more harm than good. It is not my goal tonight to point fingers or place blames. I believe teachers, paras, and all staff are only doing what they believe to be right and helpful to the students. I would just like to remind you that it wasn't that long ago when well-intentioned football coaches used to encourage salt tablets and banned water on the sidelines during two-a-day practices under the scorching sun in the spirit of building a player's endurance. Sometimes the system is wrong, and it's our responsibility to recognize and start to fix it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board member you want to respond?
I just want to jump in just for one quick clarification, and I certainly respect Mr. Strilo's opinion that he's certainly entitled to. It's just with the Department of Ed Site and Business, we haven't received that report yet, so we don't know what their statements will or won't be around our current practices with behavior programming. So I just wanted to make that quick clarification.
But they did state it in their summary.
In their summary, they had to give one positive and one area for improvement on each, in each thing. So, but no, I don't mean that.
What I said was what they said.
It's hard to be clear.
Fair.
I want to just comment a little bit on a couple of things as we kind of approach the end of the fiscal year. Overall, our building projects went very well. Most of them are ongoing. They will be completed by this fall. Just comments about our academics and activities, our arts and sports have been putting on some great, the arts are putting on some great shows this year, and our athletic teams have done very well. So kudos to all those coaches, teachers, et cetera.
Good, thank you. Anyone else?
We have a couple of administrative items, but we'll wait to tell.
All right, we do have a administrative item.
Actually, two, I just wanted to echo what was said here. Today is the last day of school. It's a beautiful day, I want to point out, on June 9, and we certainly could be sitting in some sweltering heat, and we're not.
No heat days.
So we've been extremely fortunate this spring and early summer. But I do want to congratulate and thank the staff at our buildings, teachers, paras, custodians, bus drivers, food service, for another phenomenal year. We've talked about challenging our staff to be more awesome, and I certainly won't go into a list because I'll unfortunately miss something, but there are many dozens of ways that we can show how this district has become more awesome this year. Some of those are large scale and done at the administrative level. Most are done every day individually by teachers, by paras, by those people I mentioned earlier, making good, sound choices and deciding to work hard every day for kids. So I just want to say congratulations on a great 2013-14 school year to the staff. We appreciate it. We hope you have a great summer and come back well rested for an encore next August.
I agree.
And I hope Mr. Size would like to do one.
One last.
One last.
Item from Mr. Size.
Good evening, board members. We have one additional farewell that we'd like to give today, not for a district staff member, but for a staff member who works with us through a contract arrangement with Loris College Productions, and someone who I know you've got to know, and for the folks who are watching at home have got to know both on camera through the district-wide update and off camera through the work that she does in producing that program and other video projects. So Erin Horst is in the back. This will be her last board meeting, and her last day is on Friday. We're very sad to see her go, but Erin has been accepted into one of the top musical theater graduate programs in the country with an assistantship. She'll be teaching undergraduate students, and a wonderful opportunity for her as she looks toward her future. We are sure that she'll be a teacher someday, and really just want to recognize the benefit that she has brought in helping the district define its video program, and as I said, the work that she's done as the face of the district in many ways on the district-wide update. So we wish Erin all the best. Michael McCarty, who will be taking the producer spot that Erin is vacating, is actually in the back tonight in the studio, so we hope that you can say hello to him on your way out. He knows that he has big shoes to fill, and we're excited. He's here for a few days, and then will be joining us officially at the end of June, but is coming to us from the Chicago area. So again, we just wanted to say farewell to Erin and congratulate her.
Well, I know she's done a great job getting us in shape, ready, just for the meeting, telling us to make sure our mics are on, that our cords are hidden, and she's done a great job with the district-wide update. She makes them fun and interesting, so she will be missed, but I know she's going to do great things, so thank you. Preview of upcoming board meetings.
June is one of those great months where we have two board meetings. So two weeks from tonight, we will have a follow-up meeting, and it is an educationally sort of based meeting where we will talk about the initiatives under the strategic plan that were undertaken this year, and we will talk about what initiatives we're going to focus on next year. So you'll see how those are tied together. The goals and objectives of the strategic plan are set for a three to five year period, depending upon when the Board chooses to relook at those. But these are the initiatives that we are undertaking, or some of the initiatives, to achieve that growth or that movement towards the realization of the strategic plan. So report out on where we've come this past year, and I'll look forward into the 14, 15 school year, so.
Good, thank you. So just so you know, it will be a little bit longer than tonight's meeting, so everybody just better.
Most likely.
Rest up, I'll be in Florida.
Any others? All right, then we are adjourned.